Good evening, everybody. Let's convene our regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. We have an agenda in front of us. And on each of our tables here, we have another matter to add to the agenda. So I would like to propose that this be new business item C. If you'd still mark these pages in front of you. And then I accept a motion to amend the agenda to include item 3C. Do I have such a motion? Motion and support from trustee Naidau. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now, the motion to approve the amended agenda that's in front of us. Someone in support? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The agenda stands approved. Thank you, and roll. Vanessa, would you please call the roll?
Chair Morgan?
Here.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer DeBarty?
DeBarty, here.
Secretary Gatcher?
Secretary Gatcher.
Trustee Fleming?
Yeah.
Trustee Naidau?
Here.
Trustee Frank Martin?
Every woman in my life. I know. And we barely ever form. Thank you. Approval of the minutes. Tab A in our books tonight. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the minutes of the May 24, 2022 meeting as submitted. Do I hear such a motion?
Someone in support?
And I've got a motion in support. Thank you. Any discussion?
You can type O on page two, second character. Second, it's Dr. Kimberly Burns. One of the actions that have been taken. Can you give me the end?
We're missing the end. Is that what I? Yeah, I remember that.
I could have done that right. I'm going to show off.
Thank you for the careful review of the minutes. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Our minutes stand approved. Thank you. Citizen participation. WCC Education Association. Ms. Thistle is at the microphone and ready to report to us. Welcome.
Thank you so much. It is June 2022. Most obviously, obviously, the membership is still stunned at the resignation of Kim Burns. And as Kim noted in her final email to campus, she had hoped for a fuller transition, but she wanted to stress to the faculty her admiration and appreciation for all of the support over the years. The WCC EA understands that decisions like hers are never easy. And while the WCCA was sometimes in opposition to the actions of the VPI, we all wish her well as she embarks on a new path. The WCC EA would officially like to extend our welcome then to Dr. Victor Vega as he assumes the interim VPI position. Those faculty and staff from his division speak highly of him. And since he's been active in the contract implementation for years and now negotiations, we have little doubt that he is able to tackle the issues of the membership. In terms of grievances, in the last month, we have reached a settlement on an issue involving due process for an adjunct member, and this was a good outcome. Second, the grievance related to office space that I have referenced these past few months has been submitted for arbitration, and BERC, the Michigan Employment Relations Commission, is moving forward. We've not been provided with any timeline for this arbitration. And but as I've said before, the WCC EA remains open to discussions while we wait for her. Today, there was also a step-two meeting with HR regarding another grievance for a member. This is an issue we've been dealing with since mid-March. And depending on the outcome of the step-two meeting today, the member can request that the WCCA board authorize file for arbitration if needed. In terms of negotiations, we have completed nine sessions totaling over 30 hours. But I'm happy to report that we have reached a tentative agreement. At this point, the WCCA will move forward with its process to educate and ratify the agreement. And the goal is to have this before you for the final approval in July. Again, I'd like to have a special, give a special thanks to our amazing WCC EA negotiation team. And then finally, on this month's personnel report, we see another faculty member retiring, Donna Wasserman. We wish her the very best and thank her for her 20 years at WCC. Donna and many others retiring or leaving the college have faced challenges they have not anticipated or necessarily planned for. They've had to make choices for their health, for their families, and for their peace of mind. Those who leave us take a wealth of knowledge and skill with them. And I see that we continue to average over 40 vacancies across campus month-to-month. The college has spent so much time focusing on student recruitment and retention, and we must do the same for the faculty and staff in order to maintain a high standard. Now, adding to the stress of the changes to the college, the public discourse and politics are equally distressing. I'm thankful that the MEA will be helping to guide our recommendations for the November elections, both local and statewide. And we know that our voices and our votes are so very crucial if we hope to achieve a more just and equitable future. Thank you.
Thank you. Vanessa, are there any written comments? Are there any public comments from the Board of Trustees this evening? Seeing none? Special reports. VP Tucker? If you can bring us up to date on Park Ridge and Harriet Center, please.
Joined, of course, with a longtime Harriet Street Park Ridge historian, Anthony Williamson. And it's a pleasure to provide this annual report to you, as we do each year. Want to remind the board tonight, as you might remember, this is now year two of our reimagination of the work that we do at Harriet Street and Park Ridge. We looked at, over the last two years, our staffing and the programs, and really aligned it to be under the banner of college and career readiness, which is, of course, how Anthony is role as director now. Because everything we do looks at why are we doing it and how can we affect long-term change rather than just short-term change? So our driving force, as we go for the last 20-some years, the cost of the assets and their amount of money at the eastern side of Washtenaw County, but it's mainly because of this. And he sure want to provide the board a snapshot of what the census tract 4106 looks like. It compares to Washtenaw County and Ann Arbor as a whole. As you notice, 82% of those residents, and this is the area right by Park Ridge and Harriet Street, have a high school diploma. However, that number is starkly declining when you look at a associate's degree and bachelor's degree attainment. This compares to about 97.6% of Ann Arbor having a high school diploma, 77.3% having a bachelor's degree. Then, of course, also extending to Washtenaw County, where those numbers are around over 95%. Then when we start looking at income, this is where it becomes even more alarming. So we think about, and Ann Arbor, that average is $44,000 for per capita and about $65,000 in, or $69,000, I'm sorry, median household income. But in the community in which we serve each day, it's $12,890 and then, of course, $26 per. So there's a significant need there that we try to address and do that by the entire lifecycle. So longer than we just focus on our children or adults, we're really looking at the focus on the family. With that, I'll turn it over to Anthony to talk more about our program.
So as, as VP Tucker, Vice President, we imagine what we do as far as the program in the Park Ridge communities.
Hold that microphone up to you a little bit.
To have a very strong focus on skill building and learning loss. We launched a new program called Summer Learning Experience in July 2021. With that program, what we decided to do is through additional funding, we hired certified teachers in the content of math, reading, and writing. And using a theme-based curriculum with smaller cohorts, we additionally supported academics in enrichment activities, including drone building, art, soccer, and weekly field We encouraged attendance and participation through a daily point system. Kids were able to earn points for high-end incentives. We received external support, external support, a variety of partners, including Washtenaw County Digital Learning Program, that allowed us to upgrade technology throughout the facility, as well as provide laptops and digital literacy training for about 24 families. As always, our end-of-the-camp celebration continues to be the highlight of the summer. In addition to glowing remarks from President Belaka and Vice President Tucker, a number of elected officials attended and offered remarks. Following the success of the Summer Learning Experience, our team decided to continue that style of program until our after-school participants. Improved partnerships with YCS allowed for quicker access to test scores. Additionally, we added two academic coaches to the team to support the development of relationships with families and schools. This after-school summary just talked about the number of participants who participated or registered for the program during the fall and winter semesters. My purpose continued, we continue to have excellent partners engage EMU, Ipsland and Housing Commission. And our direct observations was the academic growth of some of our youth, our access to student information. Of course, that certified teachers and, last but not least, the social development and interaction that our kids have by engaging with each other. WCC's involvement in YCS learning labs, as well as quarterly meetings with the Harriet Street team, has enhanced our relationship with our department. This year, two new programs was launched. Mentoring group at ACE High School, which is a bi-lectured group that I attended, where I mainly just listened to young men talk about struggles they were having academically or socially, as well as we helped get a first career fair at ACE High School with support from our Director of Center of Career Success and Dean Edgley. Our girls group. This program has been in existence since 1999. A weekly gathering of teen girls, teenage girls exploring various topics, including substance abuse, self-care, values and decision-making, proper hygiene, and effective communication. Other activities included vision boards, healthy eating habits, meal preparation, and field trips. Our girls group started having exposure trips in 2007, usually a destination, excuse me, no more than four hours away, using the WCC van, if you remember. Favorite destinations were Chicago, Cincinnati, and Cleveland. This year, through external support, we were able to fly to Atlanta, Georgia, where our young people, six of which was their first time ever being on a plane, we were able to purchase luggage for each participant, provided $250 cash stipend. And while in Atlanta, Georgia, we visited the historical Black colleges, the Martin Luther King Freedom Center and Centennial Park. Young Men of Purpose. This is one of the programs that we started with Ipsland and Schools. The primary focus of this project is to engage 30 young Black men in grades four through 12, in an in and out-of-school, in and out-of-school project designed to prepare them for entry into high school as the first step towards productive lifestyle. Through a weekly interaction session, these young men engage with older Black men on exploratory journey through life as a man, a Black man, and a productive citizen. The ultimate goal is that these young people will become productive, engaged adults, and all ready, connected to meaningful work, and healthy relationships, and living in healthy environments. The last side of the old demand is designed as the Brotherhood Circle. This coming-of-age ritual connects young men with community elders, sharing experiences and cultural norms among the Black community. The circle has had as many as 50 males ordered from eldest 83-years-old to youngest 99-years-old. Some of the activities that we participate as Young Men of Purpose. We also, we focus on pathways, entrepreneurships. One good, one good activity was to teach the young men or engage with young men on how to make it in the NBA by playing. We had a special guest who was a member of the New Jersey Nets, who spoke with the young people about other opportunities that they can make in the sports, in the sports. Because most of them, when you talk to these young men about what they want to do, they want to play sports. They want to play basketball, they want to play football. But our goal was to show them that through sports, there's a lot of other pathways that they can go through to still be connected to the sport, but make a decent living wage. Other people included entrepreneur Michael Bates, Michael Bates Chevrolet, who was an Eastern Michigan University student with me, and he came to talk to the young man. Tracy Markway is a good friend of mine, who's executive protection agent for the president of the UAW. All these men really enjoyed the interaction with the young people. When you sit in the circles, they rotate and just have conversation with young men just to find out what interests them, what's going on in their life. And the young men really enjoyed it.
Throughout the reimagination, as you noticed, this was a banner of the year with external support. Little over $120,000 from a number of community partners, United Way, Washtenaw County, Ann Arbor, Community Foundation, and then, of course, the Washtenaw County Department of Economic and Community Development. Well, it's also important to note that for the first year through our new relationship with YCS, they were sponsoring our people to attend our Summer Learning Experience. And that's a first. And this year, we just got word, I believe, that it looks like they will be fully funding 20 students to attend our Summer Learning Experience and redirecting dollars just because they see, I think, the growth in our relationship. As Anthony mentioned, we now have full access to their grades and their testing scores. So now, once they leave their school experience, I think that we, they'll come to us and will actually know what their cut scores are, to be able to try to build from that, ensure they're prepared when they go back to school, August, September. We do presently have an ASCO. We just received $90,000 from United Way over three years, primarily to support our certified teachers, which we know is an expense, but we believe that it's worth it and it's working. But we have a $231,000 ASCO for Washtenaw County, and we'll know actually in a few weeks of a hopeful favorable response. As we look at community engagement, you'll notice that there's a number of partners that we continue to grow and partner with to get the work done. It's always our thought that while we can do some of the work, it really takes a village. So those are a list of a few community partners. We still host, Anthony and his team, our Monday community meeting, which even in COVID is still averaging 30 participants every Monday. All community members, Debbie Digo, as well as a number of our elected officials, are join that call on a regular basis. Last but not least, is there any questions in the board?
Thank you. Any trustee comments on this glowing report?
Chair Condon, this is a question for. But I want to ask, Mr., do you anticipate the number we've come to programs and the teacher? Do you have a number or just do you need to start coming?
In 2020, when we thought about how we can have a more focused on academics, we lowered the number of young people participating. Because in order to effectively support them academically, they have to be in a smaller room. So our maximum number now, especially with social distancing and just being more safe, we now have cohorts of 12, a total of 48 kids who participate. In previous years, we had as many as a hundred kids, but were we getting that same type of learning, was we effective for the same type of learning for those kids? We're probably not. And one of the things I say now is that we went from a fun camp where kids learn to a learning camp where kids have fun.
Any other questions? Just to see if you're all right. Couple questions. So the laptops we provide are those given to the families, so they have that as a resource out and beyond the program.
Yes, that's correct. With some additional digital literacy training for these families.
Tell me again where we're procuring those laptops?
Oh.
Where are they coming from?
Oh, the Washtenaw County had a digital literacy grant. Senator Irwin has been a major supporter of what we do, secured that money through the state, then followed through the county, and we were able to fully fund those laptops and the cost, as well as the cost of training for those families. So that was a one-time thing for last year. Now, we're hopeful that somebody else this year will be able to offer up that same deal.
The WCC Foundation has been working with Toyota to get some of the equipment that they're retiring from service. And I don't know how that works with the rest of the campus, but that's another potential resource for you.
Absolutely, definitely.
One other question. I noticed in one of the photos, and it was actually one of the bullet points, photography is an activity, and one of the young women, one of the girls had a camera. And I know from personal experience that engaging youth with a camera and photography is a way to free them up to tell stories in a really helpful way, that's beneficial to themselves, their families, and their communities. And I know WCC has a phenomenal photography program. And I'm wondering if there's been any linkage or opportunities for some of our students here at WCC taking photography to maybe be mentor, photographic mentors as part of the photography workshops or anything?
So we don't currently do that. We used to get support from photography department for cameras, but these new cameras is part of the digital, the digital one that we see from Senator Irwin. And we have a former WCC student who has his own photography studio, and he's teaching photography to the young people. But we are having, or this is in development, some conversation with the newspaper, to have students from, is it The Voice, The Voice, to come and provide a newspaper, a program for our young people, which has the photography and writing stories. We might end up with a finalized product of a newspaper for that semester.
Trustee Davis, you had your hand out?
Yes. And one of your other slides, you indicated some other professional, like males in the field, various professional backgrounds that have come in to speak to the young males. Are they and will any other professional men that caliber be, may or may not, take on as a big brother mentor to any of the young males? And also, are there any slated to be the same but for the young males?
So that's your question as far as the young men. That's, it's always been a challenge to get mentors for, especially one-on-one mentors. And so that was our idea of having the group. Now, what's happened is some natural relationships have happened because they see the same person every week. So it's not by plan, because what I, what I didn't want to do is try to put that commitment on the men. Because every Saturday is a challenge, is why I want to do it, the first, I mean, the fourth Saturday of the month. But some natural relationships have started. And with our girls group, we have not done a mentorship program or mentorship connection yet, but yes, again, there's a natural relationships developed with our young women participating in our program.
I would hope that sometime in the future, when an opportunity presents itself, I trust that you will seize it and work it out. You know, because what you're doing now, I mean, is awesome. And there's always a little bit of something.
Or is it Belaka?
I'd like to thank you, both of you, for your leadership, as well as the teams that support you. The evolution of this program over the last two, three years is amazing. The focus that you have had is great. I mean, getting certified teachers, how you focused on actually improving students' learning. And, you know, it went from, which was great, a camp to an actual meaningful experience. And I want to thank you for all that you do and for the passion you show. Because that's why this works, because you're smart and you care, and it shows. So thank you so much.
I would be remiss not to thank the WCC leadership and the person who's been pushing me for the last couple of years to excel and be better, my Vice President. So I've been here for a lot of years. But I think as we are, as you mentioned, we are starting to really develop into a system and a program that hopefully will lead to pipeline of students registering to WCC.
What's well on is right, I was keeping on what you're doing.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to invite VP Barnes to come forward to update us on the agenda item mandatory
The end of June will mark the end of the fiscal, the end of the fiscal year, fiscal year 22. And at the end of the fiscal year, we start our audit process. So our audit partner, Ms. Tracy Moon, is here from AHP, and she's going to walk me through the scope of the fiscal year 22 audit.
Thank you.
Hi. Included in your packet is a five-page letter from the auditors to the board. And basically, this letter lays out the scope of our audit and the responsibilities that the auditors have and that the college has. Our responsibilities include issuing an opinion on the financial statement. And that opinion is expressed on whether your financial statements are fairly presented in conformity with US generally accepted accounting principles, which we call GAAP. The college's responsibility, you take full responsibility for the financial statements. They are your statements. We are just there to provide an opinion on those. We do consider internal control when we are auditing, but we do not express an opinion on internal control. That's really important to know, that we are expressing an opinion on the financials but not internal control. We do look at internal control as part of our planning process so that we know what areas to focus more on during the audit and what areas are maybe a little bit less risky. We also do a federal expenditure audit over the, when you have federal money that you are spending, it is required to be audited, and we do test that. And we do test controls during that process as well as compliance. There will be a separate report issued after that testing is completed. During the audit, we do look at materiality, so we're not testing every penny and every nickel kind of thing. We do look at materiality, there is judgment involved, we risk rate audit areas, and we do fraud inquiries as well. We'll probably be asking the board chair about fraud inquiries, and we ask various, various staff members and management about anything that they want to address with us regarding fraud. We have actually already met with management a couple of weeks ago, just to get an update on all the happenings that have happened over the course of the fiscal year with the college. So we're kind of on our way into that, getting ready for the audit. We will be doing our planning procedures in July coming up, and then our year-end field work will be in August. There was one change. The letter is very, pretty consistent with the prior year, but there was one change that I wanted to point out. And that's on page, towards the bottom of page three. And it's the significant risk area here. So you've never seen this before, this is not in your school letter. The reason I wanted to bring it up is I just wanted to assure you that this has always been part of our audit procedures. We've always looked at what are the significant risks for all entities that we audit. This isn't, this isn't special for WCC or anything like that. The first two, the management overriding of internal control and improper revenue recognition, are two risks that we have are two risks that we have to look at for every entity that we audit. And then the proper recognition of her funds was something that we felt was a risk for the college. So, I just want to assure you that this has been going on for years during, in our audit work papers. We've always had this type of information. The new standard that we had to follow this year just required that we communicate to you what those risks are. Trust me, sure, there's nothing. When people see significant risk and material misstatement, it kind of makes them a little bit uneasy, right? I just want to make sure that you know there's nothing to be worried about. This has been going on behind the scenes for a very long time. And then the last item I just wanted to point out was the bottom of page four. There's some other services that we provide for the college and the foundation. These are outside of the scope of the actual audit of the college, but none of these impair our independence. So, I just wanted to make sure that you are all aware that even though we do more than just the audit, we are still considered independent of the college. That's really all I have. I appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you this evening. Are there any questions? We're really excited to be going on the audit again. I'm sure management is behind me shaking their heads no, no, but.
Oh, there's a lot of enthusiasm. Are there any trustee questions? Tracy, will she do this? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much.
We'll move now to monthly reports. First, personnel matters. Tab B in our packets, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the personnel recommendations as submitted. Do we have a motion? We have a motion and we have support. Is there any discussion? Trustee Davis?
Yes, I want to say I'm sorry that I lost some good people. I hope that in their journey from here brings them peace, joy, and happiness. And I also want to state that the person in particular that we're speaking about, Dr. Hersch, she has, she had played an instrumental role in the latter part of my year, last year. And she came and to meet me at a point in my life that I needed some direction, personal and professional direction. And she was very forthright in her assessment of what I needed as a black female. And she landed over here, and I truly appreciated her taking the time out to speak to me, not just because I'm a WCC member, but because I'm also a black female, professional black female. That means direction and inspiration from another professional black female. So, I wanted to say I'm sorry to see her go. She, I'm happy that she came to my rescue, and I'm sure she'll be okay.
Thank you. We have a motion on the table?
Yeah.
Hope this is trustee's question.
I would add comments about Donna Wasserman. She's been an outstanding contribution to the college and has struggled with health issues. And I'd just like, as a board member, to wish her well and thank her for her service. Which is, political science is becoming more and more important as we all make a wonderful job with students. And so, I guess that's, Evelyn Hinton, who's been here for 21 years, what the heck, congratulations.
Trustee, that got more.
Mr. Chair, I too want to acknowledge to Beverly Hinton. She's an operator and living here since long time. And one day, I was walking with student services down there with lunch. And I saw her, just when I was there. Yeah, it was really great to see her. I really didn't see that much through the years. But I wish her luck, and I know she, she might be here. She really did. And so, I just wanted to give a nice compliment about her personality. She didn't take no offense. She was, she was honest, and she did her job. I do want to say something else too. I don't know Donna Wasserman, but she's been here a long time, as we see here. And I did meet her one time. Something, function of this here, started talking. And I found her to be a very nice person. And really open about things. And, you know, we just talked about a lot of things, and not necessarily. So, that was really refreshing. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you. I would be remiss if I didn't do a personal shout-out to Donna Wasserman, who nine years ago convinced me to direct some of my civic energy. I've engaged in a lot of civic activities towards education and to look at the WCC Board as an opportunity to continue to serve the community in new ways. And convinced me I should maybe run for the Board of Trustees, and I did. Donna was the person that inspired me. She, along with other faculty members that WCC has had the good fortune to have, she was a tenured faculty member and you know that. And came to WCC because of opportunities to work with students in ways that weren't necessarily available in the milieu of a four-year university. She was a mentor and was the faculty advisor for the Political Science Club, where students actually engaged in this stuff on their free time because they were excited about it, you know, beyond studying academically. And she would still be teaching if health allowed her to be. She embraced the move to doing distance learning as a way to reach people and was very effective at it, but she was a phenomenal person to teach as well. And I just want to give a shout-out. We will miss her, the social science, political science, the humanities. We'll miss having her. Thank you. Any other comments? Personnel recommendations are in front of us. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, already opposed. Recommendations are accepted. Thank you. Tab C in our packet this evening, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees extends the appointment of Dr. Rose Belanca as President and Chief Executive Officer to June 30, 2025. That her 2022, 2023 salary be set at $249,000. That she receives a $10,000 increase to her annual housing allowance. And that the Chair of the Board of Trustees be authorized to sign a contract with Dr. Belanca on behalf of the Board. Do I hear a motion? I have a motion and I have support. Is there any discussion? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Director DeBarty?
DeBarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Leno?
Yes.
Trustee Knight?
Yes.
Congratulations, Director Belanca.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I appreciate it.
We're pleased that the family's intact.
Thank you so much.
Moving on to Tab D, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the 2022-2023 Independent Staff Salary Range Table as submitted. Do I hear a motion in that?
Support.
And it's support. Trustee Davis, thank you. Is there any discussion? Trustee, have you?
Next time. I'll be here next time. It would be helpful if we knew how many people were at each step.
Each level?
Yeah, just an extra column or something like that, so we know exactly, you know, see the range. It would be nice to have that.
Good point. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Director DeBarty?
DeBarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Leno?
Yes.
Recommendation is approved. Thank you. Tab E, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve a 3% adjustment to the Independent Staff Salary and Wage Rates for the 2022-2023 fiscal year. Do I hear a motion? And support. Thank you. Is there any discussion on this recommendation? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Director DeBarty?
DeBarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Leno?
Yes.
Trustee Knight?
Yes.
Thank you. Tab F is the next matter in progress. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the 2022-2023 Part-Time Support Staff in Club Sports Coaches Salary. Do I hear a motion?
Support.
And support. Thank you. Is there any discussion on this recommendation? None. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Director DeBarty?
DeBarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Leno?
Yes.
Trustee Knight?
Yes.
That recommendation stands approved. Thank you. Next, Tab G in your packet, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the 2022-2023 Part-Time Faculty Wage Rates. Do I hear such a motion? And is there any discussion? Seeing none. Vanessa, would you please call the roll?
Chair Milken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Director DeBarty?
DeBarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Leno?
Yes.
Trustee Knight?
Recommendation's approved. Thank you. Financial reports, we have an action item. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees receive the financial reports for May 2022 as follows. General Fund, Capital Fund, and Combined Schedule of Investments, all funds. Any different thing that you'd like to add to this?
I'll be brief. Just very quickly, the numbers are very similar to what you would have seen last month. I'll just draw your attention to revenue, state appropriations. We're expecting that to finish up about $1.1 million favorable because of the local community stabilization authority. There was excess money that we weren't expecting to receive. And so, that would take total revenue per year about $3 million favorable. Expenditures, I would expect to be roughly in line with what you see here at the end of the year. And at the bottom, the total revenue over expenditures and transfers will be very similar to what you saw at the forecast at the Board of Trustees meeting in March when I gave you the forecast. And that was at the time at about 2.7 million, and I would still expect it to be in that general area if necessary to that.
Thank you. Any questions, VP Barnes? And now we look for a motion to approve and some support. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Already opposed. Recommendation is approved. Thank you. The Facilities Development Report, Tab I in the packet. E. V. Johnson is going to come forward and tell us how far we've come in the last 30 days. Please.
Good evening, Board. I want to provide an update on both the ML and GL projects for the Board. As you know, we are quickly approaching the end of the project for ML and about a week away on GL. So, I wanted to give kind of a picture show, a preview of what's to come. I know our official grand opening is July 9th, but give you a sense of the progress that's been made. So, these are the pictures of the HM area. Our new terrazzo floor is finished. It has a real light effect, a real warm and light effect, especially with the new skylights as well with that. You see the WCC logo is embossed within the floor. It's called the terrazzo there. And you see on the right is a picture of going into the house of the former. It's got a nice, fresh, clean, clean look to it, and I'll take you into the restrooms in just a minute. This is another view of the atrium, including just a peek at the new technology, the circle screen. That's one of the posts there. And it gives you a sense of, when the visitor walks in, they not only have the feel of the clean and warm look, but also what we speak to around supporting, including our technology as well with that. And then on the right, the entrances and exits, the new doors in the peaks above that. Our new terrace out on the west side, and on that left picture, as you go down the terrace, you see the ML 150, the boardroom down on that end, and that is now finished. The contractor's been wonderful. Just a short story, when they poured that terrace, there were some cracks in the new cement that they said were normal, and we said they were not. And they agreed at their expense to tear out the fresh poured cement and re-poured again. So, the contractors, Stenfo, have been wonderful, and the subs, they really, it's been a wonderful team to work with. And they stood by their work, stood by their contracts. So, we've been much appreciative of that.
Do we have a long-term relationship with them?
This is our first work with Stenfo. They're also, the general contractor, we're working on the Great Lakes Building, and their work there has been just as good. And then on the right, you see the picture back of that terrace, but now you're standing inside the atrium area. You can get a sense of what that looks like. We're also doing the landscaping around the new terrace, and as you'll see also on the east side, the main entrance. Now, we stepped outside, and you see what I call the porches, and they're new and visioned. This is more of a plaster work. It's called ephes work. The outside is done. And while this is on the west side, you see this, the metal, it's a combination of this plastering work and metal. The metal is being put on the east side, while the ephes work is being put on the west side. And today, they flipped, and now they're doing the other side. This is on the east side, so here you see the metal. We still have the protective film on it, so, but you get a sense of what those are going to look like with the metal facing, and then the more warm ephes as you saw in that previous slide to complement it. There's the restrooms. You get a sense of the restrooms and what they look like. Brand-new from the studs-up, as they say. This is the boardroom. The carpet might look familiar. It's the exact same carpet, and it is beautiful. It's kind of, it's kind of nice, but it's new, so. It's old but new. So we, it's really got a great, great feel to it. There's a lot of technology, as you might imagine, you can't appreciate in these pictures, but once you get in the spaces, you'll really start to appreciate the technology parts of this. This is our new art gallery. So as you walk in the main entrance from the east and you go to the right, kind of where that reception desk is, this is taking the place of where that reception desk is and much bigger. So you're seeing, and this was all with the advice of the art faculty and exactly the specifications that they wanted within the art gallery proper, including the polished concrete floors and the old exposed ceilings with the lighting there. Some of the staff there is on the left is the Police Academy, finished. And then if you kind of look down the hall towards the A, you see what the finished product looks like. So it was a careful balance between new, fresh colors and look, and yet wall coverings such as the bottom with the chair rails that can withstand the beatings that they take from going up and down the halls with furniture and activity. And so we think it'll keep this look for quite a long, long time. And now to move on to G L. But for, so G L is about a week, week and a half behind the M L. That was our plan originally. The exterior is fully done except for the windows, which are going in Thursday with it. The walls, the studded walls are all in, the infrastructure is all in, we're starting the drywall. So if you look at this about two days, you'd say, wow, this is going to be done in two weeks' time. How is that possible? Well, we went through the schedule today again, and there's like seven different traits. The hard part's done, now we just got to finish it. So the drywalling, the finishing of the drywall, the painting, the carpeting, the ceilings. And for many of these, they're labs, so they don't have the same finished look. We have some classrooms that are upstairs, but down on the first floor, it's all the labs that now are in the S R B building that are moving over to the Great Lakes Edition. And so these labs, these are not hard from finished looks for some of these labs, where you have a lot of boiler equipment and a lot of kind of H vac equipment and pipe equipment that has been going in there. The U A also required that we had a lift that brought them up to the second floor so they can get heavy equipment up. So the lift is now in, we're just finishing up the power attachments for it. So that's the end of my report for today.
Trustee DeBarty, you had your hand in the air a minute ago.
I'm good.
You're good?
I was gonna, that hundred.
Anybody else have comments?
You know, in the M L entrances with the old, how about frescoes? Because it's kind of beige.
If I could add, I'm just going to go back to that, that's a great point. The old canopies. Here's a really good picture of it. Oops. Going faster than that, sorry. The old canopies. Right here. That, you see that the upper roof stops, yet the bottom porch part extends, right? The old canopies used to extend out to the end. And in the new design, we really wanted, you know, the visitor to feel like they're starting to enter, yet can still appreciate the old sky. So there really isn't that, that much upper roof or frescoes left.
Any other comments?
Thank you.
Please.
Thank you, Bill. Bill has been trying to retire. Probably here now.
Two years.
I tried my best, but I want to thank you for postponing your retirement and for leading this project. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. It's been my pleasure. And this has been a wonderful experience to bring it through to you, so thank you.
We look forward to seeing you July 9th.
I hope. You'll be good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there remarks by any members of the Board of Trustees tonight? Do you have any of the order? Trustee Hatcher? The floor is yours.
First off, I'd like to thank Dr. Reed for the, and his staff for the lovely Juneteenth celebration. So it was very nice, decorated, music, food. Thornton gave a speech about Juneteenth, and it was really, it was really very well done. And we all came up with ideas for next year, so it was good. I'd like to bring your attention to two articles in the, did I read the trustee's board? Well, I do. And the first article is from, I didn't want to copy them because y'all have the copy. David Rutledge, former trustee, wrote a wonderful article about how trustees should ask questions. Just struck me as important. The power of inquiry and the importance and responsibility of board members to ask questions. And then there's an article about student choice for online and learning, why students, the growing preference for online and blended courses. And I think it's something we've talked about, and I've talked to Rose too, about perhaps offering, thinking about some incentives for students to come back to campus. And we could, because I think it's important for students to sit in the classroom next to weird people and get used to that, so we'll talk about that. And finally, as you know, I had to write it out because I try to keep track of the organization chart as employees come and go. And we certainly help balance the budget with empty budgeted authorized strength positions right now, where there are a record forty-one or two vacancies, not to mention the barrier of recent reorganizations and reassignments and new V Ps and new assistant V Ps. Recently, the resignation of V V Kim Herms has fostered rumors and accusations and unprofessional comments on both sides. She served for 20 years as faculty, dean, and V P I. And in my unique position as former faculty and former administration and now trustee, I have heard several conflicting accounts of her resignation, which I will not identify here, but it is a sad commentary on our institutional culture. With permission for Dr. Herms, this is what she wrote to faculty, which Julie Fissell referred to. I'm going to read her brief paragraph to the faculty, which you've seen what the administration wrote about her resignation with Mrs. Burke. I have attempted to write this email over, for over a week. When I shared with the president that I was resigning on May 16th, I did not expect things would roll out the way they did. You know, that's not my style. This is a very bittersweet ending to my 20 years at the college. Leading this amazing group of people has been an honor for me, even during challenging times. The last two years were hard, but we were all moving in the same direction together, and that made most of it extremely rewarding. We uplifted each other when we needed it, and we communicated more even over Zoom. And your outpouring over the last week is more than my heart. Thank you. I really appreciate all your kindness, some of the notes who really helped me beat up my cover letter. I did not want or need a party. We did some amazing work since I moved to this job in 2017. We moved the student success needle and continuously improved in many ways, even during COVID. I'm a better, I am a better person because of this job, and I'm thankful for every challenge. My decision to move on is not about you. Leading hardworking and smart people is not easy, but we challenged each other to do what was best for students, and I loved it. It was an honor working with all of you. Please continue to take care of one another. Fair enough for me.
Thank you. Are there any other trustee comments? President Palanca?
Yes. Absolutely. First of all, I'd like to thank the Board for support again. And I promise my commitment and will work very hard to do my job as effectively as possible. And put in guidance, college. Well, this week, we started again. Was it this week, last week? Actually, we had our roofers, water poopers, and allied workers back in campus. And in July, we will be hosting the O P C M I A, the Plasters and Cement Masons, as well as the Iron Workers, who we've worked with since 2010. And in August, we will welcome back our U A partner of over 30 years. By the end of August, these groups will bring 4,000 guests to our campus. That means 4,000 people to our community and to our businesses, which is amazing. And something that I'm very proud of, and I'm proud of these people. I mean, Marilyn Dunham has done an outstanding job. Brandon Tucker has done an outstanding job working with the ironworkers. Patrick Downey, who is, you know, Patrick is like the key, the glue to make everything happen. And of course, Michelle oversees Marilyn and Patrick. I just want you to know that through Marilyn's work, last year, we hosted a virtual U A instructor training program, replicating the summer training program online. And we had support for 100 online courses and 200 U A instructors and 1,300 students. That support and that work that Marilyn has done and routine with the U A has, you know, helped keep this relationship strong during the time that they were not able to come to campus. I'm also, would like to thank the W C C E A, I'm sorry, I'd like to thank the W C C E A team. Well, actually, I would. I would like to thank the W C C E A negotiating team and also the Washoumee County College negotiating team for all the work that you have done over the past months. Thank you so very much. Thank you. Appreciate that. We also, we were one of the top 10 fundraising organizations for the Washoumee County Heat and Stroke Walk and 5K Health last month. We have collectively raised $1,184, which I think is really amazing. And even though it's weeks away, I want to remind you about the Jerry Jernigan golf outing on August 1st. And I too would like to wish Kim Herms the best in her future. And I would like to thank her for her 20 years of service at the college. We will launch a comprehensive search process for a new vice president of instruction for Paul, and I'll keep the trustees advised as to how to process. In the interim, in case you have never met him before, I see you put your drink down, Dr. Victor Vega, who, would you want to stand, please? Have you seen him before? Dr. Victor Vega is our interim vice president for instruction. Currently, he is the dean of math, science, and engineering. And I'd like to welcome him to that position. In addition, I'm very pleased to announce that Tina Casali has been hired as the associate vice president of advancement for W C C, taking place of Phil Snyder. And thank you, Tina. Welcome, you. And lastly, Brandon Tucker has been promoted to vice president and of Workforce and Community Development. And he has done an outstanding job, and what you saw tonight was just a small portion of what this man can do. So with all that, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Trustee Hatcher?
I'm sorry. I always have concerns about, I mean, I love U A, I'm glad they come, they contribute to the community. I taught for them on summer. I worry consistently about their lack of minority representation on our campus. And I don't know quite how to represent that. I don't want to, you know, embarrass them. But it's a bunch of white men. And not that I have any problem with white men, mostly. I just wish we could somehow monitor their efforts or reward their efforts perhaps, or incentivize their efforts to employ more women and minorities as part of the training program. And I don't have any ideas about how to do that, except, you know, be allowed, but maybe other people do. So I would like to encourage that.
Thank you.
I know, I just want to know, we had, I remember Pam, who is a woman, shared by the, hey, they went to the, I guess that's what we call it, where the students were competing. And I did see a few, frankly, so I don't know. What, what do you want to say?
Well, it is. I've seen more women. Yes. And it is their organization. But I do understand what you're saying, because when I speak, I do see the audience, and I realize exactly what you're saying.
Because they're here, which is part of their culture.
Okay. Thank you.
One call taken.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Moving to old business. Excuse me. Diana, can you?
I just want to say something real real quick. Yeah. It's been on my mind, but a lot of times I can talk about it. But I think what Anthony Williamson has been doing, and I know I won't be depressing, but at least in doing the park work, is just outstanding. Some people know, some people don't know, but I used to work for, um, workforce development. And part of my assignment was to get, connect students or people from the unemployment that was at Harriet Street, workforce development. And to, for me, to bring in Washoumee Community Council. That's how the college really started getting there. So, I used to, we used to have some meetings at Park Village. It was likely the desire at that time. Okay? So I didn't know what was going on because that was city of Soane. We weren't involved, but I was with the people. And so I talked to them about employment, I gave them further education through the college. So years passed, skipping out a few years now, where Anthony started coming in, things started changing. And from him being there, and I contribute, oh, he's gone. But I contribute to Anthony's tenacity, his state, because I know those people, I should say that, but I do. They're very, very stubborn in their ways, and that's okay. But they don't trust people outside of their, so, of where they live. So you have to respect that, and you have to understand where they're coming from. My dear colleague, he used to be on the committee, and that's the first thing that was brought up. What can we do to improve Park Village? It's the community center. What could we do for the south side of Soane? All right, colleague here? So, I mean, we had ideas and some things were done, but not enough. But when Anthony took over that role, he got the, he was proud of Soane anyway, but he, those people trusted him, with their kids and what they're doing. So I just want to wrap this up and say, who knows to Anthony Williamson? And also to my dear, dear vice president Tucker, and hanging in there with him. And also to my dear, dear vice president Tucker, and hanging in there with him, because it was a task. We had been there several times to see the improvements, what they were doing. So I just really appreciate it and thank you for listening to me, but that was just online, online stuff, it's kind of handy to talk.
Please, get out everything that Diana said. I also don't want to go unsaid then. Thank you to Eastern Michigan University for allowing us to use these facilities while we have been constructively evicted from the Northwest Lawrence School. And I think this is going to be our last year meeting here in the U of U. And I think we all appreciate and express our gratitude to hospitality and you for letting us use their facilities.
They've rolled out the red carpet for us and free parking to book. We're grateful. Trustee Andrew.
It's really kind of cool to be with UA, identifying some high school games, you know, participating in.
It's not bad though.
See?
It's kind of bad though, because for a high school, you know.
I think it's difficult, usually, when the contractors come in and they were looking for people, they're high school, whatever, to start training them for their fellowship goal. So this could be a good one. Anyway, I'm done.
May I go back to old business now? The old business in front of us is Tab J, 2022-2023 department chair appointments. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the 2022-2023 faculty department chair appointments as submitted. Do I hear a motion? And support? Thank you. Is there any discussion?
If I have a question.
Trustee Davis.
When they are, individuals here are appointed as chairs, how long does that appointment stand? Just one year.
On your appointments, yes. And the discussion? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis? Yes. Secretary Andrew?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Leno?
Yes.
Trustee McNeil?
Recommendation approved, thank you. Couple more action items. Tab K in the packet tonight, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the 2022-2023 faculty sabbatical leaves as submitted. Do I hear a motion for that?
Support.
And support, thank you. Is there any discussion?
Have we had any past faculty members that have gone unsaid who come back to present us with anything?
Come back to what, sir?
Come, um, come and present here for work.
To report back?
Yes.
Because I know that. Yeah, I know, it was the last one. I don't know where we, actually, again, I'm not sure where we're at, but that, but I will get with Victor Vega and see.
I know the last, I don't remember. It actually had something to do with lettering. Yeah, it made us fat. Yeah, I really enjoyed it, so, yeah. In great, yeah. I want to see some of that.
Trustee Andrew.
The English department is destined for. Three of them are part-time students. They're all part-timers.
The other?
Including the teacher.
The other discussion? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Secretary Andrew?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Leno?
Yes.
Trustee McNeil?
And that recommendation is approved, thank you. Next one is Tab L. Recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the HVAC replacement contract with Monroe Plumbing and Heating Company in an amount not to exceed $145,000. Do I hear a motion? And support? Is there any discussion?
This is the HVAC replacement, fast made, um, employees?
Yes.
We have three bids on it. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Secretary Andrew?
Yes.
Secretary Andrew?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Leno?
Yes.
Trustee McNeil?
Yes.
That recommendation is also approved, thank you. Moving into new business, for discretion purposes, we have a strategic marketing services contract that's in front of us, and the new town is going to sell us on the idea. Let's hear what you're envisioning.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm here tonight to talk about how this desire to enter into a strategic marketing agreement with a higher education marketing firm called Oho Interactive. Before I talk about Oho Interactive's capabilities, I'd like to first touch on what, why this engagement is really important for the college at this time. As you've heard before, Michigan, Michigan's high school graduates are projected to gradually decline over the next 15 years. Not only are there fewer high school graduates, but many are not choosing to go directly into college, and many are choosing directly to go, or to go directly into the workforce. At the same time, make sure that's, this isn't like my mouse at all. So with this particular demographic trend, this means that the college not only has to capture and continue to sustain its high school graduating population, but we may also need to pursue additional growth opportunities from adult learners and also from out-of-state learners to make up or to maintain our enrollment and credit hours. In addition, the ad amount of online learning and the growth in online learning has expanded our reach to potential students, and it's also increased competition for potential students. I'm going to talk a little bit about that in a moment. So shifting demographics and market trends, like the population decline of high school students and the fact that more students are potentially entering the job market, really require us to have a more sophisticated and refined approach to our marketing communications, particularly digital marketing. I'm going to talk a bit more about that shortly. Our goal is really to be responsive, responsive and agile and able to best reach our students or potential students with the right message at the right time in the most effective manner. The demographic trends that I've talked about coupled with competition, and when I talk about competition, it's not just from higher education organizations, it's from the job market and also from employer-based training. Employers are training their own staff. So there are a lot of different dynamics happening in the market, which require us to perhaps take a different approach and really look at the mix of our, our marketing mix and how we can be more effective in the channels that our students or potential students are using. And in particular, more effective with digital, with digital marketing. You consider the fact that over 90% of individuals have some kind of access to a computer within their home or, or have a smartphone to be able to make decisions and look up information. It's really important for us to be in that digital space to be able to best communicate with potential students. At the same time, marketing tactics and strategies have really changed. And over time, we are, you know, while traditional marketing is incredibly important, today, traditional marketing combined with a very robust digital marketing plan is extremely important to our success. In addition, the way that individuals, as I mentioned earlier, are consuming media is as far different than, than it ever has been. And what I'm suggesting is that we work with a firm that will help us be more sophisticated and data-driven in our approach to reaching the students that need Washtenaw Community College for their education and career path journeys. And at the same time, work with a firm that helps us better understand what our students are looking for and what drives them to make decisions about college choice. So I mentioned that marketing has changed and over the, over the course of probably the last 10 to 15 years. And if we were to look back 10 to 15 years ago, we used a lot of traditional marketing techniques, and those techniques are super important and need to continue. We were at the very early stages in the early 2000s. For example, on email, we were also using print and newsletter advertising. At the same time, we were using broadcast, TV, radio, other means to be able to create awareness for the college and to also market the unique value that we provide to the community. We also use very important techniques like sponsorships and face-to-face events. Those things continue today, and they're super important, but combining that with digital advertising and the way, and in the way that digital advertising has changed to enable us to really reach students in a more personalized and targeted way is super important. And that's a capability we don't currently have within the, within the college marketing team. Digital media today is about paid media and it's also about owned media. So a good example is that, you know, when you think about the expanse of digital media, you can look at everything from search engine optimization. So for example, we know how, how people are searching for the college, and we know the terms that they're putting in, if they're, you know, that they're keying into their, into their internet search, you know? Say it's cybersecurity, for example. We want to make sure that we've got those same terms on our website so that our website comes up organically, naturally, so when people hear about things like our programs, it comes up. That takes some research, it takes data analytics, and it takes a deeper dive into what's important to our students so that we can include those things and know that, so that we can be there for them when they are searching. Digital marketing today also includes pay-per-click marketing. So when you're out there on Google and you're searching and you see those ads that come up at the top of your screen or on the side of your screen, those are ads that come up because of how you searched and how we, in fact, are advertising and prioritizing our digital, our digital marketing dollars. At the same time, there are new digital opportunities available to us, not only on LinkedIn, Facebook, and Instagram, and YouTube, but I dare say Snapchat and TikTok. I'm not on those channels, but those are things we need to know and learn about so that we can be where our students are and meet them where they are at. Another thing that has happened since, you know, 10 to 15 years ago, media of yesterday to media of today, is there's a, there are opportunities with over-the-top television. I don't know if you've ever heard that, but I, I experienced it personally last evening as I was streaming Yellowstone on my, on my iPad in my den while my husband was streaming another show in another room in my home. So us being aware of those channels, our, how our students are using, refining information about what they care about on those channels is really important. And having that kind of expertise to complement what we do as an internal marketing team is, is extremely important. That being said, WCC is proposing to enter into an agreement with the Strategic Marketing Services Firm. And again, the name of the firm is Oho Interactive. They would be a partner for us with deep experience in higher education marketing and even deeper experience in digital marketing and communications. They also bring, which is one of the things I love about them, a strategic national perspective on student insights. They do an annual survey every year to understand what drives students to choose colleges, and they, and they can help you understand what a student needs so that you can craft messages and content and creative to connect with what a student needs and, you know, help best convey the value that Washtenaw Community College provides to, to potential students. Partnering with a firm like Oho would, would give us an expanded digital advertising bench strength that we don't currently have in-house, and it's not, it's not something we could afford to do, quite frankly. We are getting a whole team and arm of the marketing department by doing this, and it's going to give us a strategic edge, we believe, in being able to communicate and kind of be with the times and, and, and marketing and growing and supporting our recruitment and enrollment strategies. Oho provides data-driven, responsive advertising and the ability for us to be able to turn on a dime and assess and monitor. If something isn't right, we can pull it out of the market, we can change it, because if it's not resonating with students, we can make it out, and we can, we can communicate more effectively. And again, the idea is for them to complement the skills and expertise of our marketing and communications team here at Washtenaw. I'm very proud of them, by the way, they do a fantastic, fantastic job. So with that, in closing, I'm recommending for consideration that the Board of Trustees approve a contract with Oho Interactive in an amount not to exceed $230,000 for one year of service and at the college's discretion to renew for two additional one-year periods at the same annual cost. I want to make the point that this, this expense is budget neutral and inclusive of my current 2023 marketing budget.
Is acting on this next month timely for you? Worried for discussion this evening, but?
If, if you acted on it sooner, I would be able to get into the market sooner and have them come in for discovery, which is the first part of, they learn about us really for the first 30 days, so, yes, possibly, but I can be okay either way.
Trustee DeBarty? I have a question. Is, does $230,000 is for one year, and it's our discretion to renew? Well, it is a substantial expenditure. Would renewal come back to the board and with a report from you how it's going?
That's a good question. I, I don't know the answer to that.
Oh, sure, yes, it's like.
Yes.
Yeah.
I don't know if it was, for sure, I'd love to talk about how it went.
We'd like a review from your staff of how this is working.
Right.
And advise us to continue if we are to continue.
Okay.
With that assurance, I would offer a motion to move this for consideration tonight, for a vote tonight. I would offer that motion. It's an alteration to our agenda, so it would be an approval of that motion. I think unanimous. May I make a friendly amendment to that?
Sure.
The language is the college's discretion. If we make that an option for the college to renew, that's a strong requirement. Is there support for the motion, the friendly amendment? So do we need unanimous vote to move it to, let it, do we need a vote to move it to action? All trustees in favor of this motion with its amendment, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, we've satisfied that requirement? And we have to do a voice vote on that? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Secretary Andrew?
DeBarty, yes.
Secretary Andrew?
Andrew, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Leno?
Trustee McNeil?
Yes.
How was that?
That's great, thank you very much.
We're happy.
It's my first board presentation, so I was a little nervous, but thank you very much, I really appreciate it.
Presented very nicely.
Thank you.
Which is why we all voted for you. Let's see, another matter of new business, LA Building Flooring Replacement Contract, which brings EVP Johnson back to the fore. Tab N in our packets tonight.
Thank you, Chair, Chair Milken. Couple months ago, the Board approved a contract with Best Asphalt for replacement of West Service Drive. We had Washtenaw Engineering do the original specifications for that, and it was based and it was based under the assumption of kind of normal sub, subconditions. We had no reason to believe would be anything but that. Because when our roads and parking lots are built, they're, they're built with a certain base. Um, lo and behold, when they got going on it, they found, as I've identified in the board memo, two areas. One by the storage receiving building and then the second down by the bend has become towards Lot 6, um, where the substrato was not acceptable, meaning that it would not support building a new road that would last for very long. So, so we had Washtenaw Engineering back out, they did a detailed assessment, made direct recommendations. There are certain code issues you have to comply with in terms of structural integrity of the road and those recommendations brought us to today's motion. Is that we estimate about $100,000 in extra cost. Uh, there's about 1,700 yard, cubic yards of, of soil and stone that need to be brought in and about 2,800 yards of excavation in those two areas. Uh, and so we're asking the board for an adjustment to the original contract, which was about $368,000, uh, to increase it by $100,000 so that we can complete the work. Um, if the board was to so choose to act on, on, on this tonight, the contract will be back out tomorrow and we can have the service road back in service in about a week's and a half.
This is Table 4.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Did I jump to the wrong one?
No.
No, okay. Table. We're just all getting on the same page, the pervert wheel page, as they say. Table. And the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve an increase of $100,000 to the Service Drive Asphalt Replacement Contract with Best Asphalt and that the revised contract not exceed $468,500. Do I hear a motion?
So.
And support? Is there any further discussion, questions?
There is. Right now, how long, um, has this been stalled for us for this to come to the board?
About, about one week.
Okay, so we're still being finished on time.
We will.
Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Secretary Harty?
Harty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Leno?
Yes.
Trustee Knight?
Yes.
Thank you for that convincing presentation. Right, let's take a rest. Yes, the, the LA Flooring Replacement Contract. In front of us for discussion and, uh, any background you can give us on that?
Please, thank you. Um, so the board approved back in the fall of 2019, uh, the first phase of a three-phase project to replace all three floors of the LA Building's flooring, uh, the bridge between the LA and the SC building and all, all the staircases. At that time, it brought just Phase 1, which was the second floor. And that project was done back, um, during the holiday break of 2019. Uh, our plans were to come back to the board the next year, but because of COVID, that all got put on delay. Uh, now we are ready to complete the project and actually complete it, uh, in full. So not break it into two more phases, but just get it done. Uh, we went back to the bidder that had won the original bid and they had bid on all three floors at the time and they're willing to honor their pricing back from 2019, uh, which is, which was tremendous value for the college. Uh, and so we are asking the board to approve the contract for $750,000, which will complete the floor replacement of, of Levels 1 and 3 of the LA Building along with all, all the staircases as well. And we would do the same project schedule, which would be do all the noise-making part, which is busting up all the old floor right after the end of the winter semester. Get all that dusty, noisy work done before the start of, of, of the winter semester, this would be winter of '23. And then we have the crews come in after hours, the late afternoon and midnight shift to start laying down the new floor. And it takes them about two months' time to get that new, the new floor done. At the same time, we do a refresh on the walls, uh, as what walls and line.
Questions? Trustee Harty?
Um, I know that this is, we're looking at something scheduled out December and January. So it looks on the face of it like we could comfortably wait and approve this next month. But I do know from my personal experience trying to get a concrete contractor for over a year, um, that scheduling contractors is tough. And I'm just wondering if there's some timeliness that in terms of getting them on the schedule that would, um, maybe recommend that we should approve this earlier or if we can comfortably wait till next month?
We, we appreciate the offer, but we are certainly comfortable waiting. And Flooring Tech, who's been a tremendous contractor, is comfortable waiting until next month.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Trustee Hatcher.
I'm in favor of it because it's not a perfect one.
Me too. Thank you. Thank you, VP Johnson.
Thank you.
In line with our, um, amended agenda, uh, we have, uh, Tab C for discussion in front of us. Uh, each of you have a handout to this effect. The, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve an employee appreciation one-time bonus payment to regular year-round employees in the independent job group and to employees represented by WCC EA, AFSC, or OPT bargaining units. Full cost of bonus payments will not exceed $1 million. They're subject to appropriate union participation where applicable and will be made with 2021, 2022 fiscal year funds. The Board of Trustees authorizes the administration to establish appropriate criteria for payment eligibility and to take any other action necessary to make these payments. President Wong?
Chair Milken, this is listed as discussion. I think the board is prepared to go to my final vote.
Thank you. Trustee Hatcher?
Hello. The last line of the trust character, should it be WCC EA, AFSC, and OPT or all?
And.
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 Exactly.
Good, good catch. Thank you.
Trustee Harty, I, I just want to say, we, our financial reports showed a, a significant, um, unexpected balance of revenue over expenditures for this past fiscal year. The staff at all levels of the college have worked hard over the course of the last two years under trying times and I know that there have been a lot of hoops to jump through that were unexpected. And, um, just for staff morale and in recognition of the times we've been through over the course of the last two years, the fact that we have this balance, um, I think it's a good use of this kind of money to make sure that our staff remains committed to doing the good job that they have to do.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'd just like to echo one colleague, um, but I just want to take it a step further. I think, um, people really, during trying times, when it's COVID, really went out of their way, like you said, to make sure that they can work with this edifying, that they use that good thing and that good shit.
Thank you. Would you like to move this to an action item?
Uh, I would make offer a motion, um, to move this to an action. Is there support?
Second.
Support there? Thank you. Uh, vote call or?
Voice vote. Voice vote.
Please.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Now we have an action item in front of us and you have language to work with. Call the roll.
Yeah, do we just have to, um, move it to action? Just, uh.
I move, I move we approve this recommendation that is before us.
Second.
And support? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milken?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Secretary Harty?
Harty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Leno?
Yes.
Trustee Knight?
Yes.
Well, great, including vote tonight. Our appreciation goes out to everybody here and in our viewing audience. We're pleased to be able to do this. Any other business to come before the trustees this evening? If not, I'd accept a motion for adjournment.
Uh-huh.
I see it and I have support from.
The board.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.